Selective hearing.
That's how it goes, yes.
She could hear a dollar bill down from two houses down, but please empty the dishwasher, she could never hear that. Alright, so we should probably start even though Mark's not there.
Do you have a, it's probably right in front of me.
Want to check on Matt?
You guys have been busy.
Could, but if he's one minute away, we should wait, otherwise, otherwise, we should probably start.
Aww.
We need to get him a job.
He's not that far away, he's just gonna leave earlier.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wow, good for her, that's cool.
She doesn't need to get paid?
Yeah, yeah, she doesn't need to get paid, that's alright. See, that's, that's where I was just coming from, you know, PBS World, PBS World News is what I had.
Is this, is this your first time out of the house?
Not my first time out of the house, I haven't been to Target, I've been to Target several times, also Lowe's. Barnes and Noble, because we had to return something. And I got out, I got out for sushi, which I was really excited about.
Oh, nice.
When you have sushi.
Yes, right.
Months and months and months, so, yeah, so that was very.
It's still in his house, may take my.
Okay, everybody. Good evening. It's two after seven, we're missing a member, but he'll be here shortly, so I'd like to call the planning board meeting to order. Our first order of business is a public hearing, would someone like to read the notice?
Alright, notice is hereby given of public hearing held on Wednesday, January twenty-third at seven o'clock at the West Boylston Town Hall. Here, for site plan review, application is required by the zoning bylaws, section three point six. Submitted by McCarty Engineering on behalf of RJF Commercial Properties LLC For the proposed construction of two buildings located on Shrewsbury Street, West Boylston, Mass. Also proposed is a driveway easement on the north side of the site to access Hartwell Street to allow secondary access onto the site. Any interested person is invited to attend the meeting, at which time you'll be given the opportunity to be heard. Copies of the application are available for inspection at the town clerk's office. Monday through Thursday, eight to four, and Wednesday from nine to seven, and Friday, eight to two. Paul Anderson Chair, West Boylston Planning Board, and it was in the team G on January ninth and the sixteen.
Thank you.
Oh, we need to get tear, tear sheets, see me?
Yeah, tear sheets, the paper. So I assume we have McCarty folks here, right?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you give us your presentation?
Brian Marchetti with McCarty Engineering, here tonight with Patrick McCarty as well, and the owner of RJF Commercial Properties. So, we're here tonight to present these two commercial buildings. On RJF Commercial Properties, property here on Hartwell Street, Shrewsbury Street. The building to the east here is a sixty-eight hundred square foot.
Is it possible for you to stand over here, so people can kinda see?
So, we have a rear lot here, where we situated a sixty-eight hundred square foot commercial building. With a mix of office and garage space, there's three contractor bays located this way. With associated parking, the access to this building, we're proposing through an access easement, a roadway. Right here across the previous Putton Pipe Company, which is now, Prescott Pipe, sorry. Which is now owned by RJF Properties, it's under agreement to be. The frontage to this roadway is on Hartwell Street, so that's why we propose the access to Hartwell Street. And the sixteen thousand square foot building here, on the fronting on Shrewsbury Street, will also have access Through Shrewsbury Street, but we've connected both for ease of access and driveways and deliveries and such. All utilities for this building will be serviced from Shrewsbury Street. Stormwater, we've accounted for, through underground detention basins located in the parking areas on both buildings. The colorful graphic here isn't showing that. You can see here is the sixteen thousand square foot building. So we've got sewer being serviced out in Shrewsbury Street, water also connecting Shrewsbury Street. And, gas as well. The electrical company has asked us as well to propose all the connections for electric for both buildings here from Shrewsbury Street. Stormwater will be located here underneath the parking area. And when we were here, year or two ago permitting the self-storage facility. There was a portion of this lot here that was parking in a building That was routed to the underground detention system that was part of the self-storage facility. So we've incorporated the same area of square footage, which equates to about half of this building height. So we're taking half of this building back now to the existing stormwater system that was installed under the baseball field over here. The remaining stormwater from the rooftop and parking areas will be routed to this underground detention basin. The underground detention basin here for the sixty-eight hundred square foot building is underneath that parking area. And then, because of the grading out there, we had to put another smaller underground infiltration basin underneath the access driveway. Out to Hartwell Street. All the flows from there will be recharged in the ground with a small overflow. Being routed back through and discharging here. We'd established an easement here for that discharge to the wetland, because portions of the property are within The water ship protection area of the two hundred foot, which we can't have any stormwater discharges in. So we had to route the basin here through an access easement to a flooded end to really the only piece of the wetland where we could physically discharge this stormwater flow. So these plans were submitted, they were reviewed by VHB. We received a comment letter back from VHB last Friday. And we've, we've gone through all the comments, we've addressed them. We just finished a letter today, so I have a copy of it. So I can give you guys a copy, I don't know if you wanna go individually through each one, or we can just, it's, it's a
Let's take a look.
Several pages, so we can go through kind of pertinent points and have an open discussion, Wayne, if you'd like.
Does Wayne have one?
So if there, yeah, so if there are any issues here that haven't been resolved or worthwhile mentioning, we should go, go through those, otherwise, there's no need to read all of these.
I agree, Mr. Chairman, normally it's just more proof for the, yeah, looking to maybe just highlight the, I was just thought of it as having opportunity to read this here. Highlight any other comments were made in our January eighteenth letter that you can't add with the address, or that you look at for a waiver comment.
Sure, a lot of these were just asking for clarification on content or adding a couple of small things on there, so.
Sure.
All that's been adequately addressed. Briefly addressed, you've understood, you can see, there were a couple that we requested waivers. So, three-six D-one M is location, flow, volume, and timing patterns for the existing closed traffic company provided. We had requested a waiver from the strict requirements of traffic analysis for this. It's a pretty low-impact use. For pretty much service-based industrial buildings, commercial buildings, they're, it's kinda not really a high intensity. It is changing the use, where before, these were three residential properties. But we felt that a full traffic analysis wasn't required for this.
What was the nu, what was the number of that?
The, what was that?
Page number of the issue?
Oh, it's, sorry, page two, it's from three point six, D-one M.
M?
M, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Patrick McCarty, I think it's important to point out that this rear building Is primarily going to be used for LFR chassis, Mr. Fuller's business that's currently in ninety-nine Hartwell. He builds open tire race cars there now, and he's outgrown that space that he currently leases, so he's looking to move the business over here. So the office area and these two bays will be used for that business that's currently at ninety-nine Hartwell. So, the plan is to move from there to here, which is a, you know, a very low-impact use, and then, there would be one bay available for RIN. And then, the large building going to the roundtable discussion and the Public community outreach meeting and everything, where we talked about the potential for the dispensary on these corner lots. We've agreed that this area would be temporarily, and temporarily could be three, five, seven years, depending on the demand of the dispensary. This would be used as a short-term parking to satisfy the parking requirements of the dispensary. So the objective would be to obtain site plan approval for both buildings. To immediately start construction on the sixty-eight hundred square foot building, so Mr. Fuller can move his business over here. And then, this building would be approved but not hauled.
Okay, and it would be a parking lot for immediate future?
Yeah, it would be a parking lot to service the dispensary going to the whole, you know, Leicester, public outcry of Parking on People's Front Laws and on the right-of-way and any place they could find.
Great.
So.
Okay.
So you, you guys may have to come back with an amended site, site plan for us to modify that, should that use become.
We would do a whole separate site plan submission for the dispensary.
Okay.
So. Yeah, okay, rush.
I think, you know, from the, this, the building, the dispensary building. If I remember correctly, you know, I think it, there is a connect, connecting road goes through that office space, right? So that's how the.
Yeah, let me, uh, flip back to, flip back to the color graphic.
Yeah.
So the dispensary would go where these, where this house and garage building is now.
Yeah, uh-huh.
And we originally had showed a drive, another driveway out to Shrewsbury Street, and Chief Welsh kinda discouraged that for good reasons. So on the, the latest dispensary site plan, we eliminated that driveway, and there would be a connection here into this driveway. So, you know, assuming.
So, my question is, you know, are they going towards the other building, the small building? The traffic?
No, there, there'd still be an access here.
There'd still be the access here, and there'd still be the access there.
So, that means, you know, if somebody is parking here, they can go through that building, go through that road, right?
They can go, they can exit off, they can exit onto.
Yeah, you have, you have it in and out on both streets.
Yeah, so that, that means, you know, that means, you know, you may have more traffic there.
For the dispensary, yes.
Yeah. I agree, but they are going to use that road, the smaller building, the office space building. So people, the, from the dispensary, they can go on the other road too?
Yeah, but we're not talking about the dispensary tonight, we haven't submitted.
But eventually, it's going to happen, right?
Yeah, and if, if it happens.
When it come, we, we need to consider the traffic, we need to consider the road.
We will, yeah, what I'm saying is, at that time, when we file site plans for the dispensary.
Mm-hmm.
That obviously is a different traffic generator than industrial condos, we would look at the full traffic impact at that time. But what we're, what we're saying right now is that this back building would only be for Mr. Fuller's operating business.
I totally agree, I'm not denying that.
Okay. Okay.
So, but, whatever the traffic goes to the dispensary, they, they are not, those roads are not blocked.
Correct.
So the dispensary traffic can go through that road too.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
If and when we submit site plans for the dispensary.
That's what I'm saying, so now we have to consider, you know, the traffic can go through the other road.
Well, we'll have to consider that when we come back to permit the dispensary. Right now, this is what we're permitting, we're not permitting the dispensary. So as part of that, when we come back for the dispensary, you know, we could block that off, so there's no access.
No.
No, no.
No, we'll talk, we'll talk about traffic from the dispensary when we actually submit for the dispensary.
So, I was. No, I was at the community outreach meeting.
Yes.
So that, this is what you, you are talking.
Yes.
So there is a traffic from the dispensary, they can go through that road too.
Yes.
So that's what I, yeah, okay.
That's, yes.
So then, that means, you know, we may get more traffic on that road.
I'm sure we will, there's no doubt, so that's, that's with the dispensary. We're not, we're not permitting a dispensary now, we're looking at.
The, the only, the only reason I brought the dispensary up is to say that we'd like to obtain site plan approval for this, But we, we don't have any immediate intentions to build that building. Where, as we stated, we're gonna reserve that area for overflow parking so long as the dispensary requires it. But we'd still like to obtain site plan approval for both, 'cause we, we already have obtained an order of conditions for both. The intention, though, is to build this building right away and hold off on the larger building. Does that make sense?
Yeah, phased.
Phased, yeah, we're basically phasing the development to allow for flexibility with this corner lot development. Whatever the use ends up being.
And I guess I have to notice or let people know that I work for the DCR, and I think there are butters on the backside there? Or are they, there are, did you send a notice to them?
DCR, there's, so there's RJF Properties, RJF Properties, Railroad Property, two other RJF Properties, and then DCR.
Oh, really, oh, good, so they don't, I'm not.
Yeah, no, no, you don't have to, so on the other side of the tracks, there's two more RJF Properties.
Okay, good, then you don't worry about that.
So that's why we're asking for the traffic waiver now, is these two uses are low-traffic generators.
Right, and cer, and certainly the one will be.
Yeah, particularly this one that we're talking about immediate construction is, you know.
What's his parking needs and how much traffic is he generating there? Because he's already operating a little smaller size, what's he producing?
Yeah, we have four employees at any given time.
Yeah, four employees and one or two customers a week.
Yeah.
So you need a, maybe five parking spaces, six parking spaces.
We have, we have twelve plus the, the bays themselves, just for that building.
And that's, and the other use is, what's the use?
It's, it's gonna be a rental bay, similar to what the front of ninety-nine Hartwell, it would be one bay for that.
Rental bay, okay, and that's allowed in our uses, okay.
Okay, let's continue through the list then, that was, that was a waiver you're requesting.
Correct. Page two, three-six D-one R, just a comment about the foot candles on the property. So, that one as well as the next page, three-six E-one, the landscape and photometric plan, there's some questions about The types of trees and the height of trees, that's all being revised by the landscape architect, so those will be revised and provided.
Okay. So the lighting is not gonna go out beyond the property line?
Yeah, there was, there was.
It does, it.
It did, but it's gotta be correct.
When you look at, yeah, but it, it's his property on both sides of the line. It's, he's not adversely, he's not.
So it's not somebody else's property, it's his.
Right, it's his own property then.
So maybe it's just a, some kind of a note.
Yes.
Yeah, and there was, one of the comments was over here. One of the comments was over where the self-storage facility was, we didn't incorporate into the photometric plan the lights that were on that building. So it looked like there was zero foot candles over there.
The baseball, so.
Yeah, the baseballs, yeah, yeah. Didn't, looked like there was no lighting over there, but that's all part of a, the separate project, so we didn't propose lights on that building. So the business and industrial districts, all parking spaces shall not be within the required side and rear yard setbacks. That fit shall add dimension to all the parking spaces, so, all the, all the parking spaces had notes labeling them, their dimensional sizes. But, the parking space right here in the corner and right here in the corner were over the building setback line, the side yard setback lines. So, and it was only by a matter of a, a foot or two, at most in the corners, so, if you can see on. So, we're proposing to keep the parking space, so right here it's over by a few feet, and over here in the corner it's over by a few feet. So we put in there, we're requesting a waiver from that regulation.
Is that, can we, that's a zoning requirement, we can't waive the zoning, you'd have to get a variance for that, right? I don't think that's in site plan review, I think that's in the regular zoning.
We are well over what's required for parking, so if we had to lose them, we could, but.
I need something to check, I have.
Yeah, it's worthy, yeah, yeah.
I don't know, it's not well. If it's not in three-six, then we can't waive it.
It's five point two B two C, so.
So, no, that was great.
We can adjust that then.
Yep.
Yeah, and, we're well over what's required, but we wanted to keep as many parking spaces for baseball facilities.
Understand, yeah.
Overfill parking.
You have two or three handicapped space?
We have, proposing two over here and one over here.
We agree.
Based on the gross floor area shown on the western building, here. The industrial buildings to the west requires one loading space, we're not proposing any loading spaces. This building is broken up into, as, as we had said, several individual contractor units, we drive indoors. So any vehicle deliveries are, are gonna be basically in these buildings. So, we, we're requesting a variance or a waiver from the requirement to have a loading space.
Yeah, you got it, we could just simply strike in front of those drive-in doors as loading area, so that truck could pull up and unload in front of those do, drive-in doors.
What number are we looking at here?
This, this here was.
Five two C one.
Yeah.
Again, that's not something we can waive, but the idea is.
To label that as a loading area.
We generally like to have a loading area, because if it gets purchased and changes ownership and use, then We can end up with things where traffic, the trucks are pulling out, like we have on Route twelve, pulling out across traffic and trying to back into different stores.
Okay. It's easily, easy to address. On the stormwater management section, page four. Problem was test pit, should we perform prior to construction? Site plan and stormwater report should indicate the elevation of seasonal high groundwater, et cetera. We, just like we did on Hartwell Street, we're, we're, we're going to do the test pits, we're more than willing to do them. We, we just, we'll have them done prior to the start of construction. So we'll, we've designed the stormwater system on this, these lots with the same separation of groundwater as the adjacent lot next door. So it's all the same elevations or setbacks, elevation differences from grade to groundwater. Soils out here are straight sand and gravel, they're very conducive to infiltration. So, we'll coordinate that with VHB and the planning board like we just did on Hartwell Street.
Yeah, that's one that I don't like, I, I'd rather know what we're going on in drainage, we've done this before. It's a requirement, it should get done, right on the back of that building, you've got a wetland, right?
It's, yeah.
Yeah, we had, we.
It's much higher elevation wise.
Yeah, this, right here is a massive infiltration basin that we designed for the self-storage facility.
Okay.
And, this is all beautiful sand and gravel and, what was it, ten feet deep at least?
It was eight, eight plus feet to go.
And, no issue with groundwater on that, and we're, we're up, upgrading to that.
Okay, but isn't there a wetland, just, is that a lot lower?
Yeah, the same, the same wetland here.
Yeah.
So that, we had one basin here versus one basin here, and one here. So this is, this is upgrading from that wetland, so we don't see it as being an issue. You know, having dug here, having dug for the self-storage, having dug on one-twenty-seven Hartwell Street, this is one big gravel.
It's all gravel.
It's all gravel. Beautiful gravel.
Yeah, and, and, we're not, saying we're not gonna do them, we'll do them all, and if we find the groundwater is not, you know, correlating with what we have in design, It'll be revised and reviewed prior to any construction starting.
I think the planning board, if I remember correctly, you guys have come up with a, a condition that satisfies that, that they have to come back with an amended approval or whatever, if situations change. So I, I agree with many on the fact that they should have been done prior, but we understand they're not. Maybe board would consider a, a condition.
Yeah, that we can do.
The second comment, stormwater, it does not appear that the calculations for the existing subsurface system are taken into account Of the existing flows, applicant should show the current flow of the existing system below the baseball field. So it was broken out in the drainage report. It was, point of analysis three was the model of the Detection system or infiltration system under the baseball field. So the tributary area, what was permitted back as part of the self-storage facility, was broken out. And we're showing the same areas in that model, and then we're showing our proposed conditions. Half of the building and the floor, so it's broken out square footage wise, and we show pre and post how, as part of this development, We have less stormwater going to the pond now than was going before, so.
Yeah, so that's not an issue, so you've got it addressed, it's just that they needed to get the information.
Yeah, they just.
Why don't we go through the items that are, that are questionable? That's really, because we got another one coming up in a little bit, supposedly, but, let's go. Things in our, we can figure it out.
Can you leave the door open, please, thank you. Also, chairs are here, if someone wants to, empty chairs.
So, really, the maju, all, all the rest of them, just refer to specific details on the plans. Page five, general engineering and planning comments, number six. First, the applicant should demonstrate that the existing hydrant locations comply with NFP regulations, the fire department, the fire department did provide comments, and They had nothing to say about hydrant locations, there is a hydrant located right here in front of the baseball facility, which is in close proximity to closed development.
Just check for the fire chief too, because that's past your entrance, so if the truck has to pull in, it's gotta go past, hook up, and then pull in, we don't usually like that, but. As long as the chief is okay, we're all, all set.
I did see the chief today at, at Hartwell Street, and his one comment was relative to the second driveway. And he's, you know, he did say, it's a little confusing how you presented another plan that modifies this plan, so I, I walked him through it, and that was his one concern. Because we originally had a second driveway here, and he, for safety concern, yeah.
Marijuana site, so he's still thinking about that, so we're not in there yet, okay, good.
So page six, traffic comments, number one. They're just asking us to verify that we have adequate site distances from the proposed driveway. And the intersection site distances were measured. Looking north on Shrewsbury Street, we had about six hundred and fifty linear feet, which, per Ash-toe, Is the equivalent of sixty-five mile an hour roadway design speed, so there's more than adequate site distance north. And to the site, it was over a thousand linear feet, which is an eighty mile an hour plus design, so the site distances are, are more than adequate on the property. Page seven, number three, was just about the parking spaces, just to reiterate again, we do have more than what's required, but we wanna keep this as an overflow for, for the baseball facility. And, the water department comments are all just with respect to the connections and how to make them and where to make them, so, that really is a weigh-on, you guys. Yeah, and then the final ones, fire department comment, asking us to eliminate the connection onto Shrewsbury Street, which Patrick just discussed. There, I guess as part of that, there were two, but now we're maintaining just one driveway. And we are eliminating, you know, three driveways, that were there in residential, we're only gonna have one driveway now, as part of this. So, those are our comments, we'll have, we're only waiting for, the plans have been revised, we're just waiting for the landscape and photometric plan. And once we receive those, we'll submit them to VHB, and to the town for the final review.
Yeah, and as part of that, we'll trim off the spaces that are in the setback, and, um.
That alone is basic.
Yeah, that cuts down the amount of imperatives being created. And then, we did already go through a conservation process following the intention of intent, and they did vote to issue order conditions, so we're, we're through with them.
Good, can you provide that OOC to the planning board?
Yeah, as soon as we get it, we haven't, they voted to issue it, but we haven't received it yet, but it, happy to give you. Yeah, as soon as we get it, we haven't re- they voted in issue, to issue it, but we haven't received it yet, but it, happy to give you a copy. So I think that, you know, we could, we could finish up a set of plans early next week and get them back to, uh, VHB that incorporates everything in the letter and whatever comments just came up and anything else that comes out tonight. We'd hope that the board would act favorably and allow Mr. Fuller to, uh, build his new building and move his business a little bit down the street. So, the board has any questions?
Any other questions from the board members?
And you said the idea was that that, the back building was gonna be, uh, industrial condo idea?
One, one industrial condo and the remainder would be for RJF, uh, LFR chassis.
For the. But there could be two businesses, is part of this application a business center, just so we can have a couple of businesses on the same location?
This is in the business district, right? It's, uh, it's not industrial, this is business.
It's industrially and business. This building's.
This building's an industrial, that's in business.
If we just, if we're doing it, add it to the application, and then, then he can have three businesses on the same site, and it's.
Okay.
And it's just go, a business center, is that?
Well, if it's in the business zone, it's a business center, if it's in the industrial zone, it's an industrial park, but either way, you have to ask for one or the other.
I thought the industrial park was to have more than one building on a lot, not necessarily more than one business in a building.
I thought it was more than, that are, they were pretty much the same, one was industrial, one was business, but we haven't had a lot of industrial development here, so let me re.
I would just suggest since we're going through it, if you wanna do that all at once, then you don't do it.
Yeah.
We can check and make sure on that.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I thought it was for more than one building on the lot, the industrial park.
Probably read it more closely than I have.
Could be, could be totally wrong.
Any other questions, keep going, I'll look.
So the water sewer connections are there, already existing?
Uh, water will be new for the front building, cause it needs sprinkler, cause it's over seventy-five hundred square feet, so there'd be a, a new sprinkler service and a new domestic service. The one from the house were cut and capped as part of demolition. And then the rear lot, the water service actually comes in from Hartwell Street, and the sewer comes down through the driveway out to Shoesbury Street. Both buildings have, uh, oil-water separators for the internal floor drains, cause you have drive indoors, so they have floor drains to oil-water separator, and then they have a separate sewer line for the sanitary sewer portion of them. And then electric and gas to both.
But the floor drain, drain, doesn't drain into the sewer, it drains into the drainage system?
Nope.
Sure.
Internal building floor drains go to the sewer system. External drains, parking lot drains, go to the drainage system.
Okay.
Wayne, any other comments?
Uh, no, I think, uh, the applicant engineer described that, built a high, uh, revised set of plans. For you may have a couple tweets to your letter, so we'll hold off, do it, and you guys provide that, you can do one, one more comprehensive review and issue you guys a final letter. It sounds like all the boxes will have been checked if they modify things as they described.
Okay. Then we continue to the public hearing, I'll look. Yes, yeah, I'm just looking at the uses, is it construction contractors, is that what you're, so that needs a special permit, is that, I haven't looked at your form S, is that what you apply for? Cause that's a four, we have to get four positive votes, not that I see any issues with it, but just to make sure that we're, when we're drafting the approvals or whatever it might be, it's a special permit for construction contractors.
Construction contractors.
In industrial uses.
Where's the zoning line?
The zoning line is right here. Cuts through the field, comes across, so it's a offset to Shoesbury Street. So it's this line here, industrial, top of the page, business at the street side.
Industrial's on the back.
Right.
So when the business.
But it, but this is on the same lot, right?
No, two lots.
Well, they're two separate lots, two, well, these two buildings are on two separate lots.
Yeah, this back lot.
Okay, alright.
Has frontage on Hartwell Street, and this has, um.
Can you go to the colored picture, I can't really see much on that.
Oh, sorry. This is the property line here, like this. And this comes over and has frontage on Hartwell.
Okay.
And then this lot here comes up over to the back here and down and out.
Okay. So does, do one of the lots, do we need just some easement for access?
Yeah, I think there'd be an access easement over both of them, for the best benefit of each other, yeah.
So you're gonna draft that and send that to us, yep. Cause you're gonna need that for shared parking as well.
Yep.
Uh, anybody from the public have any questions or comments about, uh, this proposal? Yes, sir.
A couple of things, at the public hearing over the banner.
Yeah.
Excuse me, we just need to name and address to.
Heard of those to eleven Hartwell Street.
Thank you.
You can say that the traffic's not an issue, because we're not talking about the dispensary, but they kinda all go together. So if you get approval for these two buildings, and you're gonna put one of them on hold, that timeline is on you, you could build that building tomorrow if you wanted to, do I understand that right? If they give you approval, you say it might be a year, it might be five, it might be seven years, but that timeline is on you.
Yep.
You could build that building before the dispensary's even thought about going in?
Yeah, in, in theory you could, but you know, it wouldn't be a very smart move for us, because we have to come back to this board and ask for a special permit and site plan approval for this corner lot. And so if we don't live up to our word and we go put that building there, then we're shooting ourselves in the foot for the special per- permit and site plan approval, so that wouldn't be a very smart business move.
And they, they wouldn't have enough parking on that little corner lot to service the use they wanna put in, so we wouldn't approve that special permit?
Well, but he said he's buying Prescott, or go back, in, in the thing of buying Prescott, which is right behind the dispensary, you'd have plenty of parking.
So I guess, so I guess that's my question, the parking is my question, so if, if this is approved as it is, is there gonna, if, if those two buildings are in, is there enough parking for the dispensary? I'm not talking about the hundred and forty spaces, I'm talking about just the minimum that you need, you're gonna have enough parking to be able to put that dispensary in down the road?
We haven't established parking needs for a dispensary yet in town, where that's hopefully gonna come through on our host agreements, when they write that, they'll hopefully have some documentation, because in our zoning bylaws, it doesn't have a number of spaces for, uh, recreational or adult use marijuana. So we don't have it in here, so we're hoping that the host agreement will establish that. And I don't know the details of the corner lot, how big it is, or does it meet the zoning, it, it's over an acre and a half, I think it is, or fifty thousand square feet?
It does.
So it matters how big they wanna put a re- a retail establishment in there, but they would be limited on the size of the retail based on how much parking they can have. And this doesn't abut the property, that little corner lot can't be expanded, cause it's impinged on both, both backsides.
Sure.
So you couldn't add parking somewhere farther over, unless they did something like, was it Lester that did, uh, commuting and blessing it?
Trussing, yeah.
But that would all be reviewed separately at the time the, uh, application came in.
Excuse me, folks, could you, uh, open the back door there, we need to have that open, thank you.
Cause it's a public hearing, that's all, we don't wanna look like we're limiting.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
I have one other question.
Yes.
Um, I recently acquired that property, there was about four or five hundred yards of dirt removed from this site, and it's being stored on a property that the Legion has next to my property. Do you know why that's there or how long it's gonna be there?
Uh, that's actually, uh, Mr. Fuller's property, across the street from the Legion?
Nope, in the Le- it's, it's in the Legion parking lot, and it's two and a half feet from my property line, it's about four or five hundred yards of dirt.
This stuff that they took off the, off the front lots, they're gonna screen it up there, they've already talked to the owner, who said they thought it was put there to screen it.
Oh, I thought it was on the other side of this.
We had, we had horseshoe pits over there, so we worked a deal rather than filling out horseshoe pits.
Yeah. Can you just?
Name, name and address, please.
Uh, Rick Freeman from one fifty-nine Hartwell Street, name Eric Legion Post. Uh, yeah, we struck up a deal to put the dirt on our lot, cause they were gonna put it on property that he purchased, which is our horseshoe pits. And where the dirt is now, we're gonna redo horseshoe pits, but they continue by horseshoes.
Okay, so is there still an issue here, or?
Is it possible to kinda move, when you're doing the screening, screen away from the neighbors to make it as.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good as possible, I mean.
Do you know what that timeline is?
Probably as soon as the ground's still.
Yeah.
Springtime, is that?
We're, we're very anxious to start this building, so we're, we're hopeful to, uh, I'm trying to just set up camp on the Hartwell Street, Shoesbury Street area and.
I thought the other building was gonna be a new office.
Yeah.
In here all the time.
So.
Alright, so I'm, you have other conditions for the.
One question for the applicants engineer, um, I don't have all of the material that you guys provided in front of me. Did you provide a separate letter with all the waiver requests to the board, if you have it, just do that with the response back?
Sure, it's in the response letter, we'll just cut, we'll cut and paste it into a separate letter.
Yeah, yeah.
Eric, why that, cause they have to read and vote on each one of those with the house, sorry.
Sure.
Thank you.
Alright, so is there a.
Yes, sir.
Can we condition the work, just so the pile of dirt next to one of the neighbors, it's not even really nearby? Is it possible to put a condition in our, in the approval here for that, or do we even need it?
So te- technically, the answer's probably no.
Yeah.
But in this good spirit, sure.
I just wanna make sure that, cause you've got, you've got something else coming up, and if we kinda blow everything off.
Yeah. Yeah. No, you, you know, we, we.
Yes.
We're always very open to working with all the different town boards, so whatever.
So that's just a lone pile?
Yeah, that's no big deal.
Sir, name?
Sam first, one sixty-five Hartwell Street. Just to clarify a little bit, I have a verbal agreement with Mr. Fuller to sell, I own each of Prescott and Sons also. Sell the property that is on the right side of Hartwell Street as you come down Hartwell Street.
That's this property.
To say that he's, I'm selling Prescott, that's not actually correct.
Sorry.
Good.
Trying to keep my company.
Yeah.
Okay.
I actually meant that part.
I know, but I just wanna clarify that it's for the neighbors, we are not selling.
Yeah, yes, no.
And your employees.
Thanks for clarification. Any other comments?
So do you have any issues with what's going on, and?
You know, putting a dispensary around the corner.
Well, we're not, we're.
I know, we're not allowed to talk about that, but.
The dispensaries, I'm sure, are gonna get a lot of people fired up.
Alright.
No, but intended.
No, but intended.
Peanuts Shorries on one eighty Whiskers Street. Uh, just not specific to this particular installation, but I heard the words that the, uh, the site, the site parking would be determined in the host agreement. Which board negotiates the host agreement with the?
Board of selection.
Board of selection.
Board of selection.
Yeah, that's not.
Okay, at the last, or when, when last time you guys were in here, there was a question about the U-Haul trucks, the operation of the U-Haul trucks out of the storage unit. And we were told they weren't gonna be there anymore, cause it wasn't working out, but I drove by last week and I saw them out there, and I saw like five or six of them, uh, what's the status on that?
As soon as we get approval on this, it, literally, there's no business there, it's just something that we have five trucks, it's not like it's, it's just, to be honest, we think we use it for U-Haul's e-commerce to spark business with the storage, so. So, it's, sometimes it's one there, sometimes four there, sometimes it's two there.
Sir. Right, but we didn't approve that as a, as a U-Haul operation center, it's, we approved for storage units. And it wasn't truck storage or any of that, it was for the use that was submitted. We could amend that, but I don't remember.
Don't, don't amend it, cause I don't even wanna do it anymore.
Okay, anybody else in the board of comments?
Can I, I make a request to the board, I, I know your standard procedure is to, um, you know, continue this hearing, get all the ducks in a row, and then close, and then draft condition, draft an approval and come back, uh, to a third meeting to ratify that decision.
Yes.
Is there any opportunity that, you know, being proactive in the spirit of a, a, a business looking to build his headquarters here in town, if we could maybe move that process up, so at the next meeting, you'd have that draft decision ready?
Can I have that ready, Mark?
Me, no. If that's the case, no, it's not even possible.
If I, okay, if I write it for you in that form, and you know.
I was beating so.
You have to open the image.
No, it's something, I mean, it's something we, uh, we have done that in the past, but we would continue the hearing, and if there are things that are not completed, then.
Yeah, if we don't have our ducks in a row for the next meeting, then that's on us, but you know, hopefully, you know, we'd be, we'd be hopeful that at the next meeting, we could, um, receive approval, so that we could start construction right away.
I mean, a lot of things were, a lot of things were a luxury.
We have three weeks before the next meeting.
That's true. Okay, so with the information we get from them in the interim.
We could.
Someone could draft a.
Yes.
Beginning of a draft and revise it as we go, yeah, yeah.
The draft, yep. Yeah.
I'll commit that we'll, we'll have everything back to you and VHB by noon time of Wednesday.
Noon time.
A week from now.
Yeah.
A week from now.
Is VHB's schedule, does that work?
What, what I can commit is, um, we'll, within a week, we'll review everything, and if there's any outstanding issues, we'll contact the applicant, try to talk it through, so that when we come back to the next hearing, um, nothing should be left, um, unsol- unresolved.
Okay, okay, well, let's move it as a goal to get that done.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Can't, I can't promise all the things that are in, in play here that we'll get that done, but that, we'll, we'll try to do that.
Nope. Nope. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
We probably should check to see if we need a special permit, so that's, you would have to request a special permit.
That's it.
Okay.
Is that additional four?
No, it's on the same form, it was a box that, I'm not sure whether you checked it out or not, and then there's a reference of the, where it, where it's required.
Just check that.
It's a form, it's our form S, it's on the website, and did we get the, the new form S completed?
Yeah. Okay, good.
Did we have any better, or the public, I'm not sure everyone got to speak, so.
Anyone else?
Okay.
So good.
Alright, well, so.
Motion to continue.
Motion to continue, um, until next time, which is three weeks from today, which is. February thirteenth at. Seven o'clock.
You can't make the motion, please make it.
Motion to continue until, uh, February thirteenth, seven, seven P M.
Second, all in favor? Oh?
Aye.
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 Or second, and then aye.
Okay. Thank you.
I thought Sarah was on second.
Since, since we're here to support the baby.
Alright.
Thank you, have a good night.
You do have plans, don't you, Vinny?
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Uh, could I remind everyone, if you haven't done so, could you please, uh, sign in?
I'll write, I'll write, I'll write your letter.
Okay.
You think of the other?
I mean, you aren't, you aren't.
Well, you're well, you're well rested now, aren't you?
All the other boys are here too.
How are you? Back, okay.
Yeah, the broke is big.
Alright, our next hearing is, um, gonna be described by our clerk, Vinny.
Alright, we noticed here by giving that a public hearing will be held Wednesday, the twenty-third, at seven thirty, at the town hall. Uh, for a site plan review and special permit application as required in the zoning bylaws, section three point six, submitted by Summit Engineering and Survey Inc. on behalf of Joe Evangelista and David Brunel. For proposed development to include the construction of a five hundred foot driveway to permit the development of nine multifamily residential units. Proposed location is Shrine Avenue, West Boylston. Any interested person is invited to attend this meeting, at which time you'll be given the opportunity to be heard. Copies of the application are available for inspection at the town clerk's office. Hours are Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday from eight to four, Wednesday nine to seven, and Friday eight to two. Uh, Paul Anderson Chair was both the planning board, and it was in the Telegram and Gazette on January ninth and the sixteen.
And we do need, uh, green cards and tear sheets for the, the notices.
You have those?
They go back to you, so. We don't have them. We don't have them, they usually are, you send them out, so they get returned to you, right?
I didn't receive any green cards.
You didn't send out?
No, I thought Town did the, did the notice. You do.
Well, if notice wasn't properly submitted or to a butters, if they didn't get notice of a meeting, then we can't hold a public hearing.
Yeah, I feel like, George Curtsey, I represent the applicants as well, I'm an attorney. So I would certainly feel uncomfortable going forward with a, uh, public hearing on the special permit application without notice to the butters. I know that there's a relatively recent change in West Boylston that requires the applicant to send the notice. I know that you also provide for certified mail, although the statute doesn't require certified mail.
No, it doesn't.
So, um, certainly, uh, we should probably talk to the board about having a, um, another date for processing the exceptions and establishing dates of the week to get notice out, um, to, to all the butters. I know that we have a full house, um, and I can't imagine how they got that without notice, but.
Social media, I think.
It's unfortunate, um.
Word of mouth.
Do you wanna ask them if they got a letter?
Okay.
What, what is, uh?
Yeah, you wanna ask them, it's on your door?
Yep.
Someone went through the door.
Could I, could I see one of those? Okay.
No, it's not from the town.
It's not from the town, but a concerned neighbor, I suppose.
I mean, it's got a Paul Anderson Chair, West Boylston.
It sure does, that's a, that's a, that's a copy of the public notice that was in the newspaper, that Vinny just read. So yes, it has my name on it, but this is not from the town.
Not only that, and I.
And not an official notice, yeah.
It'll be there on the, uh, Town website too, right?
On the website, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I know that, you know, there's obviously posting.
Thank you.
Social media, but it's not, um, it's not statutory notice.
Right.
Statutory notice requires the mail, and, uh, um, we obviously have to do that in case there's any butters not present.
Right, we have to make sure that everybody gets, gets the notice.
And the registered letter gives you the proof.
Yeah, we actually.
So that, so there's the process that needs to be followed for a public hearing, that's why it's called a public hearing, and not just one of our regular meetings. Um, everybody's here, do we wanna just do a preliminary discussion about it, hear some feedback from people? If there's something that really is winding people up, but we're, it's not gonna change that we're gonna need a whole nother public hearing. But if people have already come out, do we wanna address that?
I, I, I appreciate that opportunity, um, and as an informal presentation, uh, prior to a public hearing, um, I don't think there's any statutory prohibition of that, happy to address it, um.
We should probably close the public hearing then.
We'll close the public hearing, then.
We would continue it, yeah.
Close it now.
Well, we, we could continue it. Continue the public. Continue the public hearing.
But then would we?
Continuing or started it, or, or not started?
No, we opened it, we opened the public hearing, we read the notice, and then we just continue it so that the proper notification can be made to all the butters.
And then do we hear an informal discussion of this after we continue the public hearing?
After we continue the public hearing, yes.
Okay, so.
So, you're gonna need to get it out fourteen days in advance. It should be, you're gonna be able to get those notices out to people in the next week, so that they, we could do this at our next meeting.
We have, we have three weeks till our next meeting, it's February thirteenth.
Gotta go out this week, if we, I don't know if I can, today's only Wednesday.
You'd have to get it by Friday to be advertised on Wednesday, so if you could do that this Friday.
Well, I mean, we've met the advertisement in the newspaper, or did you, did they put it, did you put it in the newspaper?
Well, they have it in the newspaper.
I don't think we publish, do you publish?
You publish.
Town publishes, yeah.
The town, no, the town, in our bylaw, it says the town does, uh, and that's, I wrote the bylaw because in the past, the town has messed up and not done the publishing in the notice, so we wrote the bylaw such that the applicants had to do the notice and the, and the publishing. Which is a little different than the state. State requirement says it has to get done, doesn't say by whom, and we wrote it to say by the applicant. So, okay, so we don't even.
I'm not adverse to that either, so obviously, there's no publication either, right?
Right, I thought we had the publication, but no, okay.
You thought we had?
I thought he'd gotten it published in the newspaper.
In the newspaper.
It wasn't?
So those dates that you read were not?
So it wasn't actually.
Was not. No, but that was the note that was emailed to him, telling him that those were the dates, so she needs to go in the paper.
That needs to go in.
Oh.
That was published on the website as well.
Oh, okay, okay.
So it didn't, so we don't have any, so.
Okay, we don't.
Uh, so we need to close the, the public hearing that we opened, because it's not good.
Okay.
There we go.
Motion?
Close or continue?
Close.
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 So really, we're gonna start it?
We're gonna start from scratch our next meeting, or at the application.
After we start. Okay. I'll make a motion, then we close the public hearing and, and start again later, no prejudice.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, so now, now, the, so if you understood what happened, we didn't have the right notice in the newspaper, or the official notice that got sent out to a butters, so we can't have the public hearing, so we just closed our public hearing. Hopefully, the notices will go out in the, both the newspaper and the mail, so we can have a public hearing and open it next time, which is February thirteenth. But we've offered these folks a chance to, since everybody's here, or many people are here, not waste our time, have an informal discussion of what they're proposing, and then we'll start the public hearing officially on February thirteenth.
And you're welcome to stay or go, because there's gonna be another public hearing, um, but you're welcome to stay or go either way.
This could probably, maybe get some of the description out of what they're planning on doing, so we can be more informed.
So, George Curtsey again, representing the applicants. We will have public hearing, at the public hearing, we'll make a presentation again as to what we're planning to do and what we're hoping to do. This is an application for a special permit under West Boylston zoning bylaws for, um, the construction of a multifamily project on property on Shrine Ave. The property is, this part, particular property is at the bend in Shrine Ave, um, the property is three acres in the area, alright? So we start with, um, under current zoning, based on the area of the lot. The lot would have a maximum density, basically, roughly, of twelve units, alright? We are proposing a special per, uh, a, um, a multifamily project with nine units. So we're below the maximum density for it. So I know that there was an issue that we received from a peer review that kinda gave me the understanding that perhaps, uh, peer review had thought we were applying under the incentive program for increased density, we're not looking for increased density. Fact is, we're providing, we're actually applying less than would be maximum density for the lot. They, we call for a single structure, even though they appear to be all, you know, separate structures, it's single structures connected by, um, breeze which was a part of the buildings between each of the, uh, these, these major dwelling units. Um, and they're connected to make it one structure. Um, so it'll be a single structure, nine units. Uh, all of the units will have parking, will have garages for parking, uh, they'll also have parking and little private driveways areas for each of the units, and there's twi- there's a total of nine, um, residential units on the property. The property is accessed by a single drive, um, it'll be condominiumized for, for purposes of ownership, however it be owned. Uh, we hope to condominiumize and sell the units, so it'll be owner occupied, primarily owner occupied housing. Um, it'll be accessed by a, a single driveway that comes in. There is a provision at the far end of the driveway with a T turnaround, um, that would accommodate emergency vehicles, fire trucks, uh, and the like, uh, that was part of our design. We do know that the, the application, the materials have been submitted, uh, to the, um, emergency departments in town, including the fire, and their concern was, make sure that we're able to navigate and negotiate the, the turns inside. So we have provided for a T turnaround for the fire trucks at the far end. Um, the, the, the units will all be serviced by municipal water and sewer. So we recognize that there'll be separate municipal fees for those connections, but each of the units will be serviced by municipal water and sewers. We're not dealing with water health, septic systems, onsite septic, we're not dealing, dealing with wells. All of the, uh, the utilities that'll be provided to the facility will be municipal, uh, for, um, utilities. Um, other utilities, electric and the like, I believe, uh, underground utilities.
Everything's.
Everything's underground utilities, so there won't be poles and lies there as well. One of the requirements, of course, is that we comply with, uh, state and municipal law rel- or regulation relative to drainage uh, facilities for the property. And we, our engineer, this is Andy Baum, he's the site engineer. Uh, he's designed the site out so that it complies, uh, with, uh, stormwater management policy of the D E P. Um, we have, you'll notice that the darker shaded area, uh, on the property, this is the wetland, is this, no, actually, wetland is.
No, it's actually limit of clearing.
It's the limit of clearing, yeah. So, um, there is, uh, we, we are, we are, there is zero wetland alteration proposed, uh, on the property. There is buffer zone filing, this is gonna be a buffer zone filing, so we will be appearing before CONCOM, uh, for an order of conditions. Uh, but there is no alterations of wetlands, and, um, Andy, maybe you can show us this, where is the wetland idea, but the, the, right here?
Yeah, the wetland line is interior, actually, all the way up here, and it looks around near a retaining wall, which would be on the northerly or west, easterly side of the access road.
Just step back, so they can kinda see you.
So if, if you come into the site, people are familiar with where Shrine Ave is. Uh, there's a, a shallow drainage basin that was dug out in the benefit of the town several years ago. That's kinda the, the start of the border vegetated wetland.
Your vernal pool?
That's farther back, uh, and then it traverses down gradient all the way towards the, uh, driving school area. There is a delineated vernal pool here.
No, actually, that's a, this is a, on, on the D E P site, this is a potential vernal pool. The actual certified vernal pool is behind the, the fourplex. So I was able to determine that.
I thought it was between the fourplex and this one, I mapped it back in nineteen ninety-eight, I think, or ninety-nine.
When I, um, I pulled up the, on Oliver, it shows it right behind the fourplex.
Oh, you saw it?
They show, this is on Oliver, it shows that this is a potential vernal pool, and it shows that the certified vernal pool was behind the fourplex.
Yeah, if you, I mean, if you've mapped what looks like it could be.
Yeah, that.
As long as you're meeting the CONCOM standards, you're, I'll say it your way.
We're, we're removed from that anyways, but, you know, there's.
That's good.
So, uh, I'm sorry, so this darker green is really the limit of clearing for the project. The lighter shade is intended to be, uh, grass or stabilized areas, gray is paved, and then actually, that's tan of it, is the structure itself. Uh, so the wetland complex is interior to that, and actually straddles both this property and the adjacent, uh, four unit property, and then goes off to the north of the site. There is another border vegetated wetland off to the west of the site, a little upgrading of it. Um, Cavora Circle is located here, there's a large hill that goes up to the, up to the top of Cavora Hip Circle, and then into the, the rest of the subversion area. Um, in terms of drainage, uh, there's a crown spot located right at the, um, about fifteen, twenty feet off the edge of pavement. And then we have a very, very shallow pitch of one percent, all the way to a, uh, catch basin located right here. There's a grass swale intended to provide water treatment all the way to that catch basin. And then we go actually upgrading, again, one and a half percent longitudinally to the high point at the T turnaround located over here. There's also a subsequent grass line swale here to provide treatment. And then all this water is put into a recharge area located here. As I noted before, there's a lot of, pretty large hill with a lot of water coming at the site. So there's another, uh, shallow detention basin located right here, where pitch from behind the buildings and also outlets for two re- roof drain recharge go into that drainage basin. Um, to manage all the stormwater, we provided calculations in the submission, uh, to substantiate the sizing of the structures and the reduction or, or matching a peak flow rate off the site.
Did you do soil?
Yes. The soil testing was done here, 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 and here, we weren't exactly sure what we're gonna do with the drainage. Uh, there were found to be a lomi sand soil consistency. It would, when you get up into the hill, you'll get into a Paxton material, that, that's why you're getting a, that stratachange. And groundwater, seasonal high groundwater actually mimicked the elevation of the, of the border vegetated wetland.
Could you situate this with regards to West Boylston Street and the businesses there? I, I see it, north is sort of up. That way?
Yeah, so West Boylston Street's gonna be up here, this direction.
Over there.
This is the, uh, on the backside here is the, uh, um.
The drive-in.
The drive-in theory.
Driving school, oh, the, oh, the driving, oh, okay.
On the backside, it is zoned, uh, business.
The whole lot is own business?
No, there's actually a, a very small portion of the lot over in this area that is zoned residential. Uh, but the zoning bylaw carries the, um, use thirty feet onto it. So almost the entire lot and all of the used area of the lot is within a permitted area for business, which has the multi, um, multi-residence function.
I have a question.
Yes, uh, yes.
Lynn, I live in Port Cavor. Where is the existing condo on that map, it's not showing up there, so where was that?
Condo?
The existing four.
Oh, it's right up here.
So, so you know that it, as the turn, road turns and goes this way, the condominium, the condo, the fourplex is right here.
How many units are there, how many bedrooms in each?
Um. Two to three bedroom units. There's a, uh, floor plan in the application packet.
Three bedrooms, I'm told.
That's good.
What's the height of the structure gonna be?
It will be, from the front of the building, it's going to be a, it'll look like it's a lit through the second story over it, um.
Twenty feet?
Be more than that.
It'll, it'll show, um, uh, obviously, West Boylston has a maximum line, uh, under the bylaw, so we're gonna have to comply with what the required. What, what do you guys propose?
Yes.
Do you have a table, a zoning table with requirements?
Yes.
Is it on that?
It's not on that, I didn't.
Well, I'm sure the height was on that table.
I didn't put the building height on there.
Okay.
Zoning allows thirty-five feet.
Roughly twenty-four feet to the gutter.
Three acres stories.
I think he actually zoning allows thirty-five feet to the eve, so, you know, not even counting the roof line, so.
Right, right.
We'll below that.
That's on Goodell Street.
And in the back, it'll be, uh, twenty feet in the back.
I think on sixty-three Shrine, so that's right there at the top of that curve?
Yep.
How is that gonna affect, how's the driveway and the cutting down of trees gonna affect that?
Um, if you wanna use as a landmark, mark as a utility pole, right on the corner of the property.
Okay.
The driveway would be about twenty-two feet wide, plus the roundings, um, adjacent to that pole. I don't know what that situates you.
So where the four units are, if you're looking at it, the one on the left, how far from that to the driveway?
That's, uh.
That's where the pond is.
Right, right.
It's, it's past the pond.
Is your twenty scale?
So from the fourplex.
So the dark green area, they're not clearing?
Correct. It's about a hundred feet away from the corner of the fourplex. So it's, it's past that little pond then.
And so how many trees are gonna be taken down? That, you know, i- is, what I wanna know is, what is my yard gonna look like after this?
How many trees are gonna be left?
So, from here and there, that is.
Is my backyard gonna be looking at other condos, or?
We're not coming here, so.
You're not near it?
Would you?
Of the hundred, of the hundred feet between, of the hundred feet between the, the corner of the building to the, uh, edge of pay for the driveway.
Uh-huh.
It looks as though eighty-plus feet is non-disturbed.
Okay.
No cutting between, so they, they are gonna cut out for the driveway and the roundings. But after that, you'll no- you'll notice that the area of disturbance is, um, the dark green is no disturb, they're not disturbing. So this, from, here's the house, if I can, I don't know if you can see it.
Okay.
But it's kinda, so this is the house, from here to here is non-disturbed.
Okay.
We're obviously not disturbing anything on the condo property, and we're not disturbing anything in the dark green. So we're really just clearing out to basically build a driveway. And it's gonna, nothing will happen.
It doesn't say four, three bedroom apartment. It doesn't.
Oh, yeah, and, and bear in mind that, Andy, what's the depth, you know? If, if this is a hundred feet.
You've got a hundred and twenty. At almost two hundred and fifty feet to the first building.
Before you get to the first building, away from it.
So are you saying we won't see it?
Well. You know, I, I'll tell you that depending upon, of course, the angle we're approaching, you know, there is, and I don't know what's over on this area.
This, this, this yard's pretty open, so.
This is pretty open, so on the property, you know, about in the, you know, it's pretty wide open, so you can see all the way in, I'm sure you can see two hundred and fifty feet. Approaching from the condo property, from the fourplex that's existing on Shrine Ave, there's gonna be a rather large two, three hundred feet of, of non-disturbed vegetation. This, this whole area, and I don't know how, how grown up that is.
It's pretty mature.
It's, you know, so, and that's not being disturbed at all, so from that direction, there shouldn't be any visual impact.
A whole bunch of the trees got taken down during, following the ice storm. So a lot of it got cleared out, so it's not a dense growth, but is a, is a good distance.
Ten years ago.
And I guess there's some question is, you need to have thirty feet of buffer on the property?
Well, that's, yeah, so that was made, raised by, I'm glad you raised that, that was raised by the peer review. That thirty feet of buffer is required under the incentive when you're going for increase.
No, there, there's a screening requirement in the, oh, maybe for a business use, not multifamily. It might just be for businesses.
I know that the, the provision that's raised, that's noted, you know, the, the peer review actually makes reference to a section in the bylaw. That bylaw provision where it talks about the thirty-foot buffer or the thirty-foot buffer area with a hedge row, eight-foot high hedge, that is under the incentive program, this, this is an application not under that program.
We can check on that.
Is, is this gonna be a new, a new named road, this five hundred foot driveway type deal? Or is this gonna have a silly like condominium sign up front that says like Whispering Springs Condom?
The latter. Whispering Springs.
A silly sign is what you're getting, a silly sign. Well, the sign, is the sign being, is it shown on plans, not that we need to see right now, but.
No, I don't, we didn't put any provisions into our sign.
We just, well, but there's signed bylaws, so.
If we need a sign, we're gonna do a sign, but if, what it is, is it's not a road. So maintenance of it is non-municipal, it'll be private. The condominium will be doing all maintenance of the driveway plowing. So it's, it's not a road, so it's not subdivision, it's, it's, it's.
Private road?
Private, private driveway.
Are there decks off the back of these units?